I'm looking at clock by count, that clock, this clock.
I will be right around six.
As far as I know, we are, that's what it's on that board. Nobody's, no, 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 nobody, nobody has told me anything. This is the first time I saw it, when it showed up on the agenda. It's out on my book to do.
Okay, well, I guess we'll all find out together.
Yeah. You going to the ballgame Friday?
I am not, John Walker. Buddy, an old friend of mine had four tickets. He said I could buy them off her.
I mean, I'm sure I'm overlooking, okay, I just want to be sure.
Okay, well then.
I just want to be sure.
We'll figure this out.
I'm with you.
It's after six.
After, after the border. Yeah, I've got to get to Paul and Park, yeah. I want to make sure I'm. Fine, isn't it?
But we're going to be at that conference, uh, Friday is moved. We'll get back in time. You know, it's a seven o'clock game.
So I'll make the motion.
Town Hall Day, we got the city attorney.
I'll take care of it.
We got Town Hall Day.
I'll take care of it for you. I'll be fussed at later.
And we're done. And it's seven o'clock.
I'll make sure I can, I might can read it, I don't know.
You're not going to have a reliable babysitter, so the, uh, it's either I take the, uh, four-year-old to the game, which he will not make it through.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, it is time to begin our April, uh, I think March 7th, 17th meeting. It is six o'clock at this time, we call a separate order and do the consent agenda. Uh, Mr. Clare.
Thank you, Mayor, members of City Council. City Council uses the consent agenda to consider items that are non-controversial and routine. Consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of council. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a council member or citizen with a consent of council. Consent agenda contains the following items. Two items on the consent agenda. Item number one concerns approval, acceptance of minutes of reports. There are seven sets of minutes. Item one H concerns disbursement of City Council discretionary funds, of which there's a disbursement of fifty dollars by the mayor for Town Hall Day. Item one I, summary of contracts, change orders, settlement of claims, and manager's discretionary fund. There were no settlement of claims through March 9th. Uh, no discretionary funds were dispersed, and contracts totaled approximately $230,000. Item two, under consent agenda, is the resolution supporting North Carolina's Historic Preservation Tax Credit Program. It supports the restoration of tax credits for historic preservation and complements the City Council's legislative agenda. Mayor, that concludes the two items for.
Motion to approve.
Set it.
I have a motion second in favor. Uh, consent agenda is approved. Yeah, okay. Have a public hearing. Uh, request by Union County Historic Preservation Commission for historic landmark designation. Lisa. Want to be sure I wasn't skipping something, sometime I'll screw it up.
Good evening, I'm Lisa Stilwinder, the planning director of the city of Monroe, and I would like to bring before your request to consider an historic landmark designation request by Union County Historic Preservation Commission for the point, the former Methodist Parsonage located at 406 West Windsor Street. Just like to orient you to the subject property, it is highlighted in blue, and it's located on West Morgan Street, West Windsor Street, and then this is North Washington, Washington Street. The site is approximately 0.27 acres, and I believe the subject property contains a dwelling that is 3,077 square feet. The Union County Historic Preservation Commission is requesting a historic landmark designation for the exterior of the house, grounds, and portions of the interior of the former Methodist Parsonage located at 406 West Windsor Street. The portions of the interior include the staircase mantles in the two sitting rooms, doorway with the croset rounds and transom, and the bedroom mantle. The former Methodist Parsonage is a residential two-story dwelling that is approximately 3,077 square feet and consists of an Italianate frame construction. The home was built in 1886 and is considered one of the city's finest Italianate-style houses and is of local architectural significance. Historic landmark designation means the community recognizes the property as an important resource worth of preservation. Any substantial exterior design changes to a designated landmark are subject to design review procedures of the Union County Historic Preservation Commission. The designation will allow the owner to apply for an annual deferral of 50% of the property taxes, as long as the property is designated and retains its significance and integrity. I'd like to provide a photo of the dwelling. Union County Historic Preservation Commission and staff recommend the historic landmark designation for the former Methodist Parsonage located at 406 West Windsor Street. And there are representatives from the Union County Historic Preservation Commission here to answer questions, and I'll be happy to answer questions.
Any questions, comments, Lisa? Not, thank you very much. This is a public hearing, and I have three people signed up to speak, and I'll take them in order as they, as they've signed up, and Mr. John Dickerson was first in order. Mr. Dickerson, we recognize you, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, my name is John Dickerson, I live at 423 Ridgwood Drive in Monroe, North Carolina. I am a member of the Union County Historic Preservation Commission, and I would like to recommend to the City Council that they designate this as a historic property. Do you have any questions?
Any question? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And I believe the next is Anne, must pronounce it Anne. Oops, can't make out the last name.
I think it's Louis. But I just, I feel that out of here, I just wanted to thank you.
Okay, okay, didn't want to. And the other, is it Mitchell? Michelle or Mitchell?
That is Ashley Michael, and she's filled out the paper mistake.
All right, do you like to speak?
Yes, sir.
All right. Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else who would like to speak in favor? Anyone who would like to speak in opposition? If you're none, we close the hearing and take action.
Motion to approve.
A second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
That's approved. All right. Item four, Mr. Gil Russian. We recognize you at this time, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, for speaking to y'all about my water usage problem. And I'm passing out the, uh, what I'm looking at right now, for y'all some convenience and looking days and see what all transpired over since September the 18th concerning my water meter. And I would like to read for the dates of events of my water usage. And what the, what I'm basically showing is, it was the water meter, or the ERT on the water meter was causing my problem, and it was not found until later on after I spent quite a sum of money. And, uh, the water meter itself worked okay, but the meter reader part of it did not work. And I was charged over 20,000 gallons of water, of which never came into my house, was never used. And that was one part of it. I would go down through, on September the 16th, when this first started, I received a letter from my water, that the water consumption was considered higher than normal. September the 18th, I called Robert Smith of the Utility Billing Division to discuss my high, high water usage. Robert said that I'd used 18,500 gallons of water since the place billing period, and my normal usage was about 3,000 gallons per billing period. He suggested for us to check all the commodes for leaks and do the food coloring test that you put in the back of the commode and see if it comes up into the bowl overnight. Me and my wife, we did this, and nothing came out in the bowl. We did the food coloring test, to, to just two upstairs, well, no, we did all the food coloring test. September 27th, 2014, I called Steve James Plumbing, and he came out and inspected for any water leaks in my home. Steve did not find any water leaks in my home. Asked him if he had any flappers in his truck, and he said he did. Asked him to install the flappers in the two commodes in the upstairs bathrooms, as we, as we, no one lives up there anymore since my children's moved out of the home. Steve took out the old flappers and assured me that they had not been leaking, and they were okay. And also, I brought Steve here tonight, just to verify. September 29th, I called Robert Smith back, and he said that I had used an additional 10,500 or more gallons since September 19th. I then called customer service and requested to ask someone to check out the water meter. Michael Wilson, the customer crew leader, came out and did some tests, ensured me that the water meter was working correctly. I then asked Mike what I could do, as I was, I was sure that I was not using any of the water. No one had any answers as to what to do, and I did not feel like anyone was there to help me. I then called Rock's Appliances to come out and check, because I had a standalone ice maker in my basement. He came out and checked all my appliances, checked all the, uh, all the water making everything else, and assured me that there was, there was no problems with the water. I again called the water department, and no one to see that any suggestions of what I might do on my own. October 9th, 2014, I called Jim Starnes, as he was the plumber who installed all the plumbing in my house, when it was built about 10 years ago. Jim came out and looked over my house for water leaks, and also did the water bucket test, whereby the meter, turned it on, five gallons, whatever, and the meter was working correctly. And so then he said, well, he did not find any problems with the water meter. Jim said the problems had to be the ERT, which reads the water meter when the meter reader comes out by the house. He does not have to get out of his vehicle, so he actually never read the meter. I called Michael Wilson to see if he would come out while I had my plumber there. Michael did come out, and we did check, and they did check, and the ERT, and it was not working correctly. The city of Monroe then installed a new water meter with a new ERT that day, and I've not had any problems since that time. I was told that I had an older model water meter whereby the ERT was attached to the lead of the water meter, and to the lead. I think this is what they call a series 50, and I don't know, but I basically then went down the street to my neighbors on two or three on each side, and they had a new, they had a hundred series, I don't know why, I had mine never been changed out. But I was told, I was told that one they put in was a hundred series. I then looked at a couple of my neighbors, and like I say, I said, they had, they had the new ones already. I'm seeing this, since I was having a water usage problem, that at least someone would have thought about putting, or putting a new system for me, since I was having the problems. Basically, it's facts, I feel that the city of Monroe Department, Water Department, did not act, did not act to help me when new system was available, that could have prevented me from spending excess money on my part. I feel the city should reimburse me for my extra spending, and the water bill that I was charged, since the problem was the ERT, which is the city's equipment. I would not have accepted anything not working in my house, I would say that was my problem. I have no control over the city equipment. I cannot work with theirs, can't have anybody's working. So I now want to go to the last page on y'all's packet there. It's a note or a letter from Jim Starnes, who could not be here tonight. Jim was the one who built my house. He said, of course you read, I went to the home of Gil Russian on October 9th, 2014, to check for signs of any water leaks. I was the plumber who installed the plumbing, and this house was built about 10 years ago. I inspected all the plumbing in this house, did not find any water leaks. I then did the bucket test, and the meter was working fine. I then realized that the ERT was probably the cause of the problem. I have seen the ERTs get wrong readings on about three water meters over my years as a plumber. Gil called a person with the city of Monroe Water Department, and he came right out, and I explained to him that the ERT had not been, had, had to be given the wrong water usage reading. At this time, the city of Monroe installed a new water meter, a new ERT meter, and it started working correctly. And of course, it's been working correctly since then. I also put his, he's a North Carolina plumber's license number 30, 38247. I've attached the bills to me also, which, the previous steps planatory, 175 from James Plumbing Company, fifty dollars for Rock's Appliances, 249, 27, Jim Starnes Plumbing. This is the labor department checking out the water leaks and the water meter. I subtracted the cost of a circling pump, on the water heater, that is, the pump that circulates and keeps you hot water all the time. As I failed to cut off, I failed to cut this off, when I kept cutting the water off in my house every day. I had to go, go in the world with, they telling me I was using as much water, and yet I couldn't find it, because I was kind of in the jam for two months. When I cut, I cut the water off downstairs, of course, the cost of the pump was 310, 73, which I would accept my cost. At least 474, 27, total cost that the city of Monroe should reimburse me, plus the cost of the other 50% of water that they, that the city withheld. I did not use any of this water that I was charged for. And now would like to, uh, bring Steve James up, if I could, and he's a plumber, he came out and looked at my plumbing also, installed a new flappers.
Okay. If you give us your name and address, start for, for the record.
Um, my name is Stephen James, I'm with James Plumbing Company, and, uh, I went out to Mr. Russian's house on September 27th, and I have a pretty standard procedure I go about as far as when I get calls for a lot of high water bills, that's one thing I do a lot of. Well, the first thing I asked Mr. Russian to do, I said, let's make sure everything's off in the house, we go look at the meter, if it's turning, we use the water. That meter was solid as a rock. And, uh, so usually if the meter's turning, then I'll cut the main off and see if it's, you know, between the main, the shut off and the meter, or in the house, where, there was nothing to do. We, we went through that house with a fine-tooth comb, everything, and I could not find, and I've never seen, you know, the meter turn, and that little, the little dial on the meter is very sensitive, I mean, you can just crack a faucet, and that thing just flies, and it was as solid as a rock. And, uh, I, uh, I, I fully believe it was a malfunctioning ERT.
What's an ERT?
Electronic.
Motor readout.
It's an electronic readout that we have.
But, uh.
And also the flappers.
Well, uh, yeah, yeah, we, um, Mr. Russian asked me to check all the flappers, and, and I did, and if you were, if you're losing water like that, those toilets are going to refill themselves, I mean, they, you would hear it at night, I mean, but, but I, I couldn't find anything wrong with the flappers, and Mr. Russian asked me, said, well, if you've got flappers, why are you here, let's go ahead and change them, get, get something out of the service call, you know? So we, we did, and, uh, but I showed him the old ones, and there were, there was really nothing wrong with them. I, I fully, fully believe this is a malfunction.
Mayor, the reason, um, this came to council is it came to the customer service committee, but we can, the, the committee, we can only do what the policy says. Any policy change has to come to council, so that is the reason it has come to council. Personally, I feel that we should give him the overage charge, which is 100% of what he was charged over what his normal bill was. And, but the recommendation, uh, from the finance director at the time was 50% because of policy, so that's the reason Mr. Russian is here.
Mayor, I want to note, it's not that there's a policy change being sought, it's your, if you agree with that recommendation, is to depart from the policy.
Yes.
Well, uh, yeah, it, let me do this first, if any questions.
I have a question, Mr. Russian, what is the dollar amount you're seeking, uh, to be reimbursed for?
I'm sorry?
What is the dollar amount you're seeking to be reimbursed for?
457 dollars and something up, because I was, you know, if they didn't fix that, I had to go out on my own, and I have, the bills are out there, and they come out to 474 dollars and 27 cents, plus the water.
I think the additional award is about 75 dollars, because didn't they give you 50% off, they gave you the adjustment of 50%, right?
They gave me 75 dollars.
And I think this other half would be about 75 dollars.
Well now.
Well, they didn't give a sword, I don't know, I didn't use any of that.
Has he al, has he already gotten some credit?
I think they got 70 dollars, 72 dollars.
Dawn's here, she can answer all things.
You received a credit of 72 dollars and 51 cents.
So now, let me make sure, of course, we've got some more stuff to do, but let me, let me, since we've asked him questions, I'll go ahead and get mine in too. Is this 72 dollars less than 450, is this 450 plus 72, the 72 you already got?
474, 27 is the cost on three, on Steve, Rock's Appliances.
I know, but my question.
And, and no, okay, now that's in addition, the water they come up with, I don't know how, they give me 50%.
Well, I'm saying, you, you're asking for 450 dollars.
I'm asking for 470, 474, 27.
Or 474.
Plus 50, plus 70, another 72 dollars.
So you already got the 72?
I got half.
So it's, it's the 72 plus 474.
Plus another 72, because they only give me 50% left. It would've been 100.
That's 516 dollars.
Yeah, right.
Any other questions, council, have any questions or comments? Okay, thank you very much.
I'd like to hear from Russ, Mayor.
Okay, uh, Russ, if you would, please.
Mayor, council, thanks for the opportunity to share a little more information with you. I did bring Randy Griffin, our maintenance superintendent, he's a meter expert, leak expert, he's done a bunch of these, so, um, and, um, when I got involved, it was after Mr. Russian submitted a claim, and we, Randy and I personally went to meet with Mr. Russian at his house, we really wanted to help him resolve this. So the chronology leading up to about the end of November pretty much stacks up with what Mr. Russian said, with a couple of exceptions. First, um, when, when the meter was first read by the billing department to show the excessive consumption, the ERT was working, it matched. When they get a high, a high consumption notice, they go back, the billing technician goes back, physically reads the dials, the speedometer of the meter, and checks the ERT and make sure those match one to one. So that ERT was working perfectly at that time. And then, from that point forward, every time our staff went to meet with Mr. Russian and look at this consumption, because 18,000 gallons sounds like a lot of water, but a very small leak, half a gallon a minute intermittently can, can total up to 18,000 in a month. Uh, so every time our staff went back, they were now comparing the dials of the meter, so the ERT was taken out of the picture in terms of the analysis of, was water going through the meter? So want to make that clear, we never found a problem with the, the ERT until, it was in the October timeframe, when it failed completely, it was not sending any readout, which wouldn't indicate high consumption, it just indicated no read whatsoever. So that is a really important point, uh, and Randy could confirm that. So once we began trying to work with him to find out where this water was going, not only did we test the meter on site, his plumber tested the meter on site, not the ERT, just the, the physical dials of the meter, it was working 100% correct. Because a, a water meter is a, a mechanical device, I mean, it's almost impossible for water to go through it, or for the dials to turn unless water goes through it. So the ERT was taken out of all that analysis by our staff to make sure they were getting a true indication of how much water was going through the meter, and that would also apply to the second bill he got, which was the 11,000, that was based on the dials, not the ERT. So we, we did take the ERT out of the equation, and when it failed completely, we did, we did change it. So after we analyzed all that, and the assistant city manager at the time, Greg Dempo, asked for, for a report, um, you know, we, we summarized all the findings, and we did recommend the, uh, the credit per, per the policy of the 50% of the excessive consumption, but, and at that time, Mr. Russian was also asking for the pump and some other things, and we just had summarized, you know, we never advised him to turn the water off, and he did that on his own, so we couldn't support that, so that's in your staff report. But, uh, I guess Randy might add, we've had a number of these where there's just kind of a, it's difficult to determine where the water's going. We did, uh, Mr. Russian was keeping a log of the actual daily use, but then, you know, we asked for that, and I can't remember, Gil got lost or whatever, so. Yeah, and that, that's a, that's an improvement. Well, we, yeah, and we didn't want that either, but, um, so, um, without some sort of daily reads to really see what's happening on a daily basis, it'd be hard to see exactly was this happening in the middle of the night when nobody could hear the toilets filling or, or an intermittent leak of some sort, so we just didn't have enough information to support a claim that we should pay for plumber bills and damaged equipment, because, you know, we, I think staff worked extensively, I think they actually did a really good job trying to figure this out and help Mr. Russian, so, uh, so that's all in your staff report.
So did the failure of the ERT cause the, uh, high water consumption, is that what it is, it was not that?
Not at all.
So that's what you replaced?
We, we, once we go out and it's an older meter, we'll replace both the meter and the ERT, just because it's an older installation, but we don't do that until something actually fails. When our staff went, the ERT was working, the meter tested 100% accurate, we wouldn't change it, just, you know, we don't change them if things are working properly. It was after the ERT stopped reading completely, we changed both the ERT and.
Well, he mentioned, uh, and I, about the 100 series, is this what you're talking about, and then, then there's another series, that he had, was it an 80 series?
He had an older. He had a 50 series.
Okay, whatever the series was, his was the older series, and I stand to be corrected, but did he say that all the rest of the neighborhood had the new 100 series?
I don't know about the whole neighborhood, but right now we have over 3,050 series still left and working in the system, unless they fail, we don't go change them, they're very expensive to change.
Well, I can understand.
150 dollars for a meter and ERT combination. So, you know, we go do our diagnostic, diagnostic, if the ERT's working properly and the meters test properly, the bucket test and these other things we do, we, we don't change it.
Russ, question. When you changed the, uh, the meter out and the, the part that supposedly was giving trouble, and his water level quit, how would you, how would, how does that play into the fact that it was leaking prior to that?
Yeah, and I'm sure Mr. James is a great plumber and all, if you look at the timing, if one of those flappers was leaking, even intermittently at night, if you look at the chronology that we gave you, and the fact that the original overage the month was 18,500, the next month was 11,000 and some change, th, those two things happened between those two windows, so a leaking flapper could also explain the consumption going back to normal for us, more so than, than the meter, uh, you know, all of a sudden, you know, being accurate, because again, we were reading the dials on the meter when we were doing the leak and, and the leak analysis, and then when we did his second bill, the ERT was taken out of that picture, so that just didn't explain it for us, and that's why we made the recommendation to.
I don't know the dates of when it was and when it wasn't, but I heard him say, when they changed meters, everything was okay. Tell me about that, I mean, I don't understand, that's why I'm asking that question.
Right, um, Mr. James changed the toilet flappers on September 29th, and the meter was changed on October 8th for the next billing, which occurred at, toward the end of October, so see those two things happen in between the billing reads, either one could explain why the consumption went back to normal.
When you say either one, either the meter or the flapper?
Or flapper.
It could be either one.
In our opinion, yes. That, that.
That's correct. So the meter could malfunction.
Uh, but we tested it, it's 100% accurate.
Well, I know, the reason I said it that way, I understood you just say it could, could be either one, it could either be the flapper.
If there was evidence that the meter was wrong, then that would be one explanation, but because of our tests, we didn't feel that was the case.
But it could be. I don't, I'm not trying to stretch this thing, but I'm trying to get the information from myself, to be fair, I want to, you know, I want to, I want to.
And we do too, Mayor, when we go out, if we think we made a mistake, we will, we will offer to pay, make, you know, make it good.
I know that, there's no doubt about that, I don't question it at all.
We have to try to go with what we just call a final.
Yeah, I understand that.
We, we dug into this, and this is what we, we came up with, that the ERT never showed a high consumption, the electronic piece, and after the, the first time our staff went out, every time we went, we were just looking at the dials of the meter, and everyone, including their plumber, tested the meter, and it was 100% accurate, so it just told us that the meter wasn't malfunctioning. Water was going through it, somehow, an intermittent leak or something, and they're, they're hard to explain, right? We've had a bunch of them like this, and they're just hard to, to figure out, but the water, we believe the water went through the meters.
Well, I don't know if I heard this right, but I think that I heard the plumber say that he's seen, or, I, he didn't say hour, but he said he's seen meters fail before, and my question would be to him, has he seen hours fail before for a fact?
Well, I think the plumber said he's seen ERTs fail.
Okay.
The ERT, and we have too, we, we've changed a lot of ERTs, thousands of ERTs, uh, so the ERT can go bad, but nothing in, everything we did showed that the ERT had started indicating a high consumption that he got overfilled for, nothing indicated that, so.
Okay. Yes, sir.
If, when ERT fails, or is giving up a reading that doesn't, isn't accurate, you go back and audit the meter and-
The dials.
Wouldn't there be an indication that there was a discrepancy in that, that if you were getting false high readings in the meter, which would demonstrate that, and, and that the, the false high reading would be reconciled?
There would be a discrepancy between the reading and the dials, yeah. That's why the billing department's procedure, when they get one of these highs, they go physically and, and do it onsite. They don't trust the drive-by anymore, the guy gets out, he opens the box, he looks at the dials, he reads the electronic. If they don't match one-to-one, we get a work order to fix that. That, that was not the case, they did match one-to-one.
The point being that, uh, a, a false high reading isn't going to be carried forward one or two billing cycles, it's going, it's going to be reconciled.
Correct. Yeah, if we think, you know, if it's a high consumption or low, then the billing technicians go back out and, and make that reconciliation. We don't want that to go on for month after month, not at all.
So Russ, you think the flapper was the problem?
Well, it's just, I don't, I don't know if it's coincidence in time, but after the flappers were changed, within that next three-week period, the consumption came back to normal, after they read it and it was eleven thousand, which was less than the eighteen, which shows that if there was water going through that meter, which we believe there was, um, it would explain it if a repair was made partway through the month. That makes sense. And then after that date in October, it went back to normal, but both the meter had been changed and the flappers had been changed, so.
But in, in, based on what I hear, um, Gil nor you really is totally positive what happened.
On, on some of these, we never know where the water went, we're just confident based on a meter test, if the test numbers are inaccurate, not there that water did go through the meter. That's pretty, pretty standard across the industry, it's not just Monroe, that's, that's national.
Okay. Any other questions, comment, counsel?
Yeah, I have a question, so what Gil is asking for is what, the, the water? You're not asking for plumber bills, is that correct?
No, he was. You know, I would make the motion that we do deviate from the policy to give him back the hundred percent overage of the excessive charge.
Just the overage, not the plumber bills?
I would second that.
And I guess that should include sewer if he was charged sewer.
Well, he, that-
Okay.
Was that adjusted when he got that seventy-two dollar credit?
Seventy-two, it'd be fifty percent water sewer.
So he's got some adjustment there.
Both water and sewer credits for the overage.
Okay, all right, I have a, a motion, uh, Ms. Nash, would you state that again, please?
Uh, my motion is that we give him, deviate from the policy and do the hundred percent of the o, of the excessive overage charge that he was charged for water and sewer. He's already gotten fifty percent, so the addition would be fifty percent.
Okay.
To what, to max out to the hundred percent.
Okay, I have a motion, and suck it. Any other questions?
If, um, Russ would not, would have said that, you know, it was a hundred percent that you knew it was the flappers, then it would be different. But being that we don't know, I think that we're going to give him the benefit of the doubt, or I'm going to give him the benefit of the doubt.
I think that's just the fair thing to do, because we don't want to set a precedence where every time we have something like this, that we pay plumber bills and all that, so. Being that you don't know for a hundred percent, we'll give, I'm, I'm going to give, um, Mr. Rushing the benefit of the doubt.
Well, uh, yeah.
A lot of them, we do find a leak, and so it is pretty certain.
It's easier.
I had one today, and it's down the street from Mr. Rushing's house, so, uh, an outside leak, and sometimes we can find them quite easily, but this one was a challenge. I think staff worked really hard to, to try to find it.
And I would like to say, I do think y'all work really hard, I just think that some of that, that's just an unknown sometimes, so.
Yeah, you do a great job, y'all department, thank you for what you do, and, uh, but, uh, and you, sir. Uh, any other question or comment? Uh, I have a motion in a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Here and done that one, Steve, take care of it. All right. Thank you, Mr. Rushing. Item five, proposed cost projection for medical and dental plans. When do you want to do this, Russ? Yeah, okay. Would y'all mind waiting to the, uh, we're going to, uh, change the, uh, rotation, uh, and go from five, and I apologize to y'all. I didn't know at the time we were going to go do that, and we'll go straight to six, the recommendation of a former tax collector. Uh, at this time, uh, Bethany Everett, is, how are you, Howard?
Hover.
I'm sorry?
Hover.
Hover. I wanted to be sure I got that right, I apologize, uh, so at this time, we'll recognize you.
Good evening, mayor, counsel, I'm Lisa Strickland, the interim finance director, and I'm here tonight to recommend the appointment of Bethany Hover to serve as the city's tax collector. An oath is required, as well as the adoption of an order of collection to charge Bethany with the obligation to collect the taxes included in those receipts. Bethany is a Monroe native with family in the area. Um, she graduated from Piedmont High School, has a daughter Salem, and Glenn, her husband, who are here tonight, as well as her mom and dad, and her mother-in-law. Um, Bethany likes to paint and read, and of course, spend time with Salem. Um, Bethany was hired at the city back on January twelfth, two thousand and nine, as a customer service representative. She has served as the backup supervisor for our payment center for three years, and wa, advanced to the lead customer service rep back on September eighth, two thousand and fourteen. She's responsible for new staff training, preparing tax garnishments, making payment arrangements with customers, managing our debt set-off program, along with other responsibilities. Um, Bethany has attended classes at UNC School of Government to receive her collector certification in the state of North Carolina, and is on track to receive that certification within the next year, which would be a condition of employment. She is not required to have the certification to serve as the tax collector, just achieve it within one year. Um, this position is a council-appointed position, and we request that counsel appoint Bethany and Ms. Hover, and administer the oath of office.
Okay, I have a motion. I have a motion for moves in a second. All in favor? Congratulations, Bethany will do the oath of office. Is y'all light, come up? Do you, Bethany Everett-Hover, solemnly swear that you will support and maintain the Constitution and the law of the United States, and the Constitution and the law of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, that you will faithfully discharge the duties of office as tax collector in the city of Monroe, North Carolina, and that you will not allow your action as a tax collector to be influenced by personal or political friendship or obligation, so help you God. Congratulations.
...on which plan that we will select. I'm going to turn it over to Mark.
Good evening. So, we've met with the Benefits Committee a number of times as we've gotten prepared for the medical renewal. And on a positive note, the plan is running well. We have in our... One of the options available this year is a major change in cost and benefits. And that is in the renewal that you see on the column before you. However, given financial considerations and looking at the entire budget process, there's a need to consider some alternatives to the current plan today. Option one that you see in front of you essentially puts the plan back in a position that it was in the 2013-14 plan year. So, the... Some of the changes that you'll see is the co-insurance today is at ninety percent. It will take it back to what it was in 13-14.
Can you... Excuse me one second.
Yes, sir.
Can you zero that thing in a little bit? What you see?
Can we get one light off? Would that help it?
It's blurry.
Yeah, if we get a light off over there, it might help us a little bit.
It's still a little blurry.
This is actually a vision exam tonight. I hope it's very clear to you.
Okay, I'm gonna plead ignorance too.
And I've got a...
Mark, let me... I'm gonna plead ignorance too, but now, you... I'm not telling you how to do your job here, but you might want to explain those columns and those colors a little bit so we could follow along. You probably know that thing like the back of your hand, and I've never seen it before. So, I'm having a little problem.
Sure.
Okay.
So, and I've got a laser pointer which should help in the process as well. So, this column is where we're at today. The colors have actually really... These colors, the yellow, actually has no meaning at all other than just to highlight some of the differences that we're going to be talking about going into this renewal season with options one and two. So, as you'll see here, and I'll go down just to make sure that everybody's clear. Today, we have a thirty-five dollar copay for primary care, seventy for specialist care. The deductible is fifteen hundred dollars for an individual. Family maximum is three times that, which is why you see the forty-five hundred. Then, once you've satisfied the deductible, then you have to pay twenty percent of the cost of the dent creation today, ten percent of the cost today, up to a maximum of two thousand dollars for a single, three times that for a family. The current emergency room copay is two hundred fifty dollars per visit. Pharmacy benefits that you'll see before you, five dollars are for generics, forty-five is for preferred brand, sixty dollars for third tier or non-preferred brand, and then that fourth on the right-hand side are for specialty medications, twenty-five percent up to a maximum of a hundred dollars. That's typically the most expensive medications such as Humira and MS drugs and some cancer drugs, which is a very small number. Last year, we had a large increase, which City Council obviously supported and funded. So, going into this plan year, we have no change at all for the current plan and no benefit change as an option available to you. As I mentioned earlier, because of overall budget considerations, reduction in cost in the health plan needed to be reviewed. So, we came to the table with option one and option two.
Before you go any further, I need to know how much the city contributes toward the health insurance plan for that option one, the one that we're currently in.
So, today, the approximate budget cost is five point five million dollars?
Five point five million?
Five point five.
How much do the employees pay?
One point four approximately.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Well, what is that total dollar figure you got there? Six, eight, five, eight, seventy-eight?
That's both of them combined, probably.
Yeah, it's both of them.
That's both, and you're speaking of the...
Individually, between the city and what the employee contributes.
Okay.
Okay. So, option one, the change... There's two changes, essentially, or three changes on option one. That would be to take the current ninety percent co-insurance, that's ninety percent paid by the city, ten percent by the member, back to eighty percent paid by the city, twenty percent paid by the member. It does not increase the out-of-pocket expense or the co-insurance limit at all. All it... What it does do is it accelerates the point of where the member would hit this two thousand dollar co-insurance limit. Another change is taking the two hundred fifty dollar copay for emergency room services back to deductible and co-insurance. So, today, when the member goes to ER, it's two hundred fifty dollars per event. They would then have to pay fifteen hundred dollar deductible first, and then the co-insurance would apply if they exceeded that.
So, if they had met that fifteen hundred dollars, then what would it cost to go to the emergency room?
Whatever the cost is, the average cost of ER, depending on the visit, is around eleven hundred dollars. So, it's essentially, it would be about four times higher than what it is today for the first visit.
Well, you're saying that they would pay all the emergency rooms...
Correct.
After they meet fifteen hundred dollars?
Before. So, once they've met the... So, all the way up to fifteen hundred dollars...
Right.
The expense goes to the member. Then, after that, the co-insurance piece applies.
Yes.
Now, if you go to the ER once, then option one is not as good as current. If you go to the ER five or six times, then potentially, this is actually a better solution.
Okay.
But you have that acceleration of payment on the front end. And then finally, the front-end deductible of a hundred and fifty dollars would apply for pharmacy. Again, through the 13-14 design. And what it means is if you're taking Nexium, and it costs two hundred dollars to take Nexium, then you're going to pay the first one fifty one time at the beginning of the plan year, assuming that's when you have that prescription filled. Then, you're going to pay the... Either the preferred brand or non-preferred brand copay of either forty-five or sixty, and then the rest of the medication costs are covered by the plan. If you go back the next month, then all you're going to do is just pay either the second-tier or third-tier copayment.
But, Mark, have you not found that in the past year, our prescription... People were getting their prescriptions filled more because they didn't have the deductible in our prescription usage? I mean, people were actually... From what my... From my understanding, they're actually getting their prescriptions filled now because they don't have to pay the deductible.
The increase in claims costs, from the best that I can tell, is the removal of that cost share of this out of the 13-14 plan year. I haven't seen an increase in scripts filled, but certainly, that removal of that cost share did increase the cost to the city. So, I'm not sure I've got a good answer for you, Ms. Nash, but I know that when you removed it out of the 13-14 plan year, obviously, there was higher claims cost to the plan because that was a cost share that was removed from the members. So, those are the changes in option one, which would entail a four point five percent decrease, which would decrease the city's funding, would decrease the employees' funding, and of course, that decrease in employee funding results in lower premiums across the board.
How would... Tell me... Okay. So, what would the city's contribution be under that scenario?
Instead of the four point five... I'm sorry, five point four million...
Five point five, which is... Be how much?
Five point one-ish. Five point one.
And what would the employees' portion be?
It would take it from about one million four down to a million, say, three fifty.
A million three fifty?
Yes, sir.
Fifty thousand dollars less?
Sixty, sixty-one, sixty thousand.
Okay, six...
Because right now, it's at a million four oh six.
Okay, but you said a million four.
Yes, sir. I was rounding.
What... What would it... How much would it increase the employees' monthly out-of-pocket cost?
The premium or the...
No, no, no. For the copays, for, you know... You know, based on our past history, for, you know, the emergency visits, for the additional money for specialists, you know, whatever the...
Sure. It means no increased cost in primary care visits, no increased cost in specialist visits, no increase in hospitalization visits as far as deductible. The co-insurance change...
No, it... You said that if they have to go to the emergency room, that it goes from two hundred fifty dollars...
Yes, sir.
To fifteen hundred dollars.
Potentially, yes, sir.
Okay, so that's...
Depending on when the claim...
Okay, so potentially, and that's what we're looking at?
Sure. So, if you look at the average ER cost, you're talking about, for those that go to ER, which is not that frequently, you're talking about, let's say, about eight hundred dollars in an increase, eight hundred, eight hundred fifty dollars.
What about the... What about the deductible for prescription drugs?
That typically... That's going to be worth about, of this total, maybe three...
I'm talking about for out-of-pocket for an employee?
It's going to add a hundred fifty dollars. Is what it'll add.
It'll add a hundred fifty dollars for the...
Prescriptions.
For the first month, and then after that is...
No impact.
Well, it'll be an increase for the... If somebody needs to take the tier one, I mean, the tier two or the tier three medication?
Once it's been satisfied, Mr. Jordan, once, it's done. So, once they've satisfied that hundred fifty dollar front-end deductible, any prescription filled thereafter that's brand name will be no more cost than the copays that you see in front of you.
Okay, that's... That's not the way it worked when we used it before. When we used it before, every time you filled, say, a three-month prescription, of course, then we were having to do the...
Mandatory mail? That's not in this?
Well, but the mandatory mail was, again, operated in pretty much the way I see that this operates, where, you know, the employees want to have to pay an additional cost for every time they're going to pick up their prescriptions.
That's not the way that's designed, Mr. Jordan.
I understand about design, but also understand about practicality. All right. Go ahead. Sorry.
Well, that could have been another type of policy he's talking about and another benefit plan. Is that correct?
He's referring to this one.
Pardon me?
He's referring to this, Mr. Jordan.
I'm confused.
I am too.
It is. It's only that Mr. Jordan's experience is what he's saying is that he had a hundred fifty dollar front-end deductible that was to be satisfied every time he had a mail order prescription filled.
That's correct.
But that would...
But that's not what you're saying?
But not for retail. It's one time. It's just one time.
In the future?
Yeah. It's one time for the...
So, this councilman said that that was a feature of an older plan. It wouldn't be applied to the future.
It was a plan that predated this, the one that we're in right now.
Right.
Yeah.
Which is what he's wanting to take us back to.
That's right. No, no mandatory mail, no mail unless...
Well, no, no, no. But again, the deductible was something that...
It's one time, Mr. Jordan.
Okay.
I did experience that too. I did experience having to pay the forty-five dollars.
Oh, sure, the forty-five dollars, absolutely. Every time that you fill the prescription, every time, absolutely.
But it was a name brand or...
Sure, absolutely. That's part of the plan that you have to pay.
Five is a generic, forty-five is a...
Preferred brand.
Then in six...
Tier three. Sixty is not for brand. But this one hundred fifty dollar deductible is a one satisfied one time, and then it's just these copays, just like you have today. So, the only additional expense is the hundred fifty dollar front-end deductible.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Did staff do anything about how they preferred, what they... Which plan they preferred?
Employee benefits committee. The employees, whatever committee is, the employees that meet Larry, the employees that meet...
There was a session for employee representatives in the Peace Department.
What did they prefer?
It was balanced. And it was balanced. Well, in terms... Well, a little correction. I'm getting ahead of myself. In terms of the proposal, it was balanced, but if you ask, does Larry want a ninety-nine ten plan or an eighty-twenty plan? Larry would like a ninety-ten plan, but there's some fiscal realities that we need to consider.
But did the employees pick the renewal at what they have now?
Again, well...
Because that was my understanding from our meeting, was the employees picked that, and then some of them liked the HSA.
You're talking about the ninety-ten?
Yeah.
Right.
That was our understanding from our meeting.
That's accurate.
Yeah, okay. That's what you had told us. Okay.
Are there a lot of difference in the premium the employee would have to pay if they did not have that hundred fifty dollar deductible?
So, here at the bottom is... Are the premiums that would be paid. So, the employee premium would drop about a dollar forty-four. The... Or, single children would go down about six forty-one. Spouse would drop fourteen and change, and then family would go below six oh nine, which is approximately a thirty-eight dollar, thirty-seven dollar drop.
Now, a column that will show what the cost would be...
Yes, sir.
Get away with a hundred fifty. Is that what you showed me?
This, if you kept everything the same, then the premiums would be the same.
They... In other words, they pay what they're paying right now?
Correct.
Okay.
I was trying to figure out...
That's what he's saying. There is no increase.
Yeah.
The second column is for this next, says for year. If you keep the same plan, you know, there's no increase.
Right.
Correct.
Which is the first time and how long?
We never did get the third, fourth column. That's just showing you a little less benefit, a little less premium. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay? And percentages of dollars on that are fairly...
It's a reduction of nine percent, and savings to the city would be about almost five hundred thousand dollars, savings to the employees, the other...
But that's eighty-twenty.
And some other things.
But here's the big difference in option two, since you're asking about it, is this is not recommended. So, we were asked to provide options.
Okay.
And so, this changes specialist from a current copay of seventy dollars to the other one co-insurance, which is a heavy hit to the employees. It's only shown as three options. The recommendation from staff and city managers, option one, based on this reality. Back to the question, what would employees want? Of course, they would want to keep everything the same and all the other things that they would like as well, pay raises and so forth. I mean, so, again, it really, you know, just from a budgetary standpoint, we're just trying to work with, you know, the budget realities that we have in front of us.
Well, the family plan on the one on seventeen fifteen, six sixteen, is three thirty-eight ninety-seven, right? Or three eighteen?
It's three eighteen ninety-seven for spouse.
Yeah, three eighteen.
Spouse and family is six oh nine thirty-nine on these monthly rates.
Okay.
But is there any anticipated increase from... For insurance this year, like we normally have? Last year, we had a twenty-one percent increase. In prior years, we'd had anywhere from probably an eight to a twelve percent increase. Is anything like that anticipated this year?
Not for this year. Not for fifteen sixteen.
Why? Is there a reason that you can think of why we would not be experiencing that kind of an increase?
The funding that we had from this past year, that twenty-six percent increase. So, we had the twenty-one percent increase, then we made the benefit changes, so that funding is helping support a no increase for this year.
Okay. I thought the increases were a product of the industry and that the industry would basically say, in order for you to get the same kind of coverage, you know, you've got to pay this percentage higher rates in order to get it. I thought that's why we had to pay the twenty-one percent additional money.
No, and it was based on your claims activity. So, we had a very high claim year in the thirteen-fourteen year. So, in thirteen-fourteen, we had a twenty-two percent increase in claims, and that necessitated the need for the increase that we had coming into this plan year. The prior year, we were seeing a single-digit increase. This current year, we're seeing about a six percent increase in claims comparing the same periods. And based on the funding changes that the city made last year, we don't have to have a funding increase for the current plan sign. Does that answer your question, Mr. Jordan?
Okay, so, our employees are helping us maintain a constant rate basically for two years in a row because we're not having high claims?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so, one other question, then, maybe two, not that big a deal. So, we got one, two, three, four, five columns there. So, first two columns are for the prior year, second one's for going forward next year. And then, you offered two alternatives, which apparently were run by the committee or employees. And of those two, they didn't really like the one, so they rolled it out. And the other one you have there as an alternative would save us, if we went to that, would save us three hundred and eight thousand dollars over what we currently have.
Yes, sir.
Well, that doesn't amount to a penny, and if we're having no increase, I see no need to further discuss this. That penny is irrelevant, and I'd suggest that we stay at the rate that we're at.
I agree.
And that's the ninety-ten, right?
That's the ninety-ten. I agree.
I'd second that.
Okay.
Okay.
If I could interject, we... If you could help maybe explain the Cadillac Plan tax that's looming on the horizon and as a... Probably a comment towards that and points that Mark will dwell, drill down on, is I would urge the board not to wait until, was it twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen, for that tax to be imposed, where we've got to make a radical difference, change in the plan offering. My suggestion, much like we followed maybe a lead in our rate plan and rate structure, is an incremental change in option one, which is what I'm recommending along with the last column on the right, HSA, two companion plans, is to ease into that rather than making an abrupt change in roughly two fiscal years or three fiscal years.
One of the...
Mark, if you could try to give a little bit of insight on what the Cadillac Plan tax is and what it represents and what...
One of the things that I've constantly asked ever since the Affordable Healthcare Plan came into being, because I've tried to keep up with the pros and cons of... One of the things, and I've heard about, you know, plans that were considered a Cadillac Plan being taxed. And I constantly asked, you know, where we would regard to our plan being a Cadillac Plan. And I'd always been told that we were nowhere near our plan being considered a Cadillac Plan. So, apparently, you know, there's been some discussions about our plan being a Cadillac Plan that I was not a party to.
Mark can answer that, I'm sure.
Sure. So...
It hasn't been presented to employees, the Cadillac Plan?
So, in discussions with the staff and in preparation for two thousand eighteen, which is the Cadillac, when the Cadillac tax would be imposed, historically, Mr. Jordan, you're absolutely correct, the Cadillac tax was not a consideration until this current year, when we had the twenty-something percent increase. The plan today, as it stands, is on the verge of being, well, the employee-only contribution for some of the tiers not up here is, would be considered a Cadillac Plan. One of the changes that perhaps might have to take place is the flexible spending account might have to be modified downward to keep the city from hitting that Cadillac tax, which is two thousand two hundred dollars for a single contribution, including the employees' contribution, or twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for the family. So, today, in some of the tiers, the city is higher than the ten thousand two hundred dollars, when you take the employee contribution into consideration, and also on the family side as well. Those are preliminary discussions that we've had with staff. Those come into play in two thousand eighteen. That's part of our two thousand sixteen-seventeen planning process with staff and the Benefits Committee, but it is looming out there. So, historically, thirteen-fourteen, it wasn't an issue, and prior to that, Mr. Jordan, it will become an issue in two thousand eighteen. And some of the... Some changes are going to have to occur to avoid that, whether it's elimination or significant reduction of flexible spending account or maybe potentially other things. But it is going... You're right up against the Cadillac tax.
And tell me again, how much the Cadillac tax would be?
So, it's a forty percent excise tax for any contribution over ten thousand two hundred dollars for single, and any, again, any contribution above twenty-seven thousand five hundred for family.
So, you're talking about basically the flexible spending account employees have?
No, it's also the employees' contribution to the health plan, both the city and the employees' contribution as well. So, if you... So, in one of the tiers that you have, those that are non-participants in the wellness program, when you take the city's contribution plus the employees' contribution, you're over that ten thousand two hundred dollar annual contribution threshold. When you take the HSA contribution, it just sends it that much higher. On the discounted, everybody, the people who are participating in the flexible... People who are participating in the wellness program, the city's contribution doesn't exceed, doesn't hit that two, ten thousand two hundred, both the employee and the city contribution. But when you take the FSA contribution into consideration, then you crest that threshold. So, the discussions that we've had have been, potentially, we're going to have to modify FSA contributions or eliminate it as a benefit, depending on what the future contributions are going to occur. So, yes, we're a couple of years away from the Cadillac tax, but we're already starting to have discussions about that.
Yeah, your term was preliminary.
Well, and again, we have been having our employee benefits committee meetings, and this first, I've heard that there's, that we need to stop the parent for the Cadillac Plan tax.
So, you said we're three years away from it?
Yes, ma'am.
So, we either pay for it later, or we pay a little bit now, and then it won't be so hard when it... In twenty eighteen, is what you're saying?
And what the manager's referring to is, do we start to make changes to the health plan to meet that Cadillac tax, or do we have to change other pieces of the benefit offerings, such as flexible spending accounts, to be, to stay below that ten thousand two hundred for single or twenty-seven five for family?
So, right now, it's sort of unknown.
No, we do know that some things are ultimately going to have to change.
I mean, you know something's coming, but you don't know what for sure.
No, but we do know the Cadillac tax. We know the amounts right now.
Okay.
You don't have to... You don't have it as an issue today, but it will be an issue in two thousand eighteen.
Well, how much change is that going... I'm sorry. How much change is that going to make money-wise, if you know about? If you go with Plan One now, what's that going to change it? And if you go with Plan Two, I know that's going to affect us in the more positive way, is what you're saying. So, if we went with Plan One and got into the Cadillac thing two or three years down the road, what's that doing to us?
Well, it depends on what occurs. It depends on... And I haven't done the math on where option one falls. It is obviously going to be slightly less than where you're at today, about four and a half percent. But it depends on how the claims flow for the next couple of years and what the contributions are, digs takes, what you're going to have to do as far as the health plan to stay within the Cadillac tax provision.
Mayor, I would love for the Employee Benefits Committee to have the opportunity to review what we need to do in preparation for twenty eighteen budget, you know, and budgets leading up to that, to get ready for the Cadillac Plan tax and maybe revise our policy so that we can better... So, our employees and the city can... our policy, so that we can better, so our employees and the city can better afford it. But I think that the coverage that we have now is the coverage that we can afford going into our twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen budget year, and there's already been some consensus on the part of council that they would like to see us do that, and, you know, and instead of waiting until November to start having our Employee Benefits Committee meetings next year before we start looking at healthcare coverage, maybe we need to start a little bit earlier, so we can start making those early preparations.
Okay.
So Freddie, you had a motion still?
Yeah, I, I, I would agree with that. We're kicking it down the road, but I mean, y'all all know that, that there's a new sentiment at, at, at the federal level at this time about this issue, and by two thousand and eighteen, you could see some change. And so, I, I, two thousand and eighteen, in my opinion, is, I'm not trying to kick the can down the road, but I'm just saying that we're taking a little risk, but I don't think it's that big a deal really to worry about today, and I, I'd say we're fine, and we'll deal with it in two thousand and sixteen, seventeen.
Well, I, I agree, but I would like to see how much, if you can come up with a figure what it's going to cost in that Cadillac money. I mean, it sounds to me like it could be a whole lot, it sounds to me like it could be very low.
If you can't place a dollar amount on it, you can't without-
Well, let's let that go back to the committee.
Call for the question, go ahead.
All right, that's what I'm fixing to do, we've got a motion and a second, but we let the committee handle that.
Future.
Future.
The future.
Yeah.
The motion's, go ahead and go with the renewal right now.
Go right in, Mayor.
The mo, the-
The motion, Freddie, Freddie, repeat your motion, please.
I, I'll make a motion that we, that Mark three up on their offer here to leave our plan intact with no increase in premium.
Here's the second.
That will be the second column highlighted in yellow.
Yes.
All right, okay, I have a motion and a second.
Try that, you got that.
Pardon me?
So you got the same motion twice?
Yeah, yeah, right. And so, we do have a motion and a second.
Any more, any more discussion? Any more questions? You have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Out.
Any opposed? Okay, that's it.
Thank you.
All right. Let's see, where we at here now? Item seven, now. Item seven, reappointing Commissioner Ms. Nash.
Yes, this is an appointment committee met today, and we're recommending to appoint Angelia James to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, to appoint Richard Gerchek as alternate to the planning board, and make a motion.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Here none, that's approved. Item eight, public comment period, anyone here who would like to address the council? If not, I hear none, so we'll go to item nine, closed session.
I make the motion to go into closed session in accordance with North Carolina general statutes, one four three dash three one eight point eleven, A four, city council is committed to hold a closed session to consider matters relating to the location or expansion of business in the area.
All right, I have a second.
I didn't realize you had a-
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Mayor, you may want to advise that the only folks you need to have remain are the council manager, clerk, and the attorney, would be Ms. Bote, Ms. Strickland, and Ashley Duncan.
Okay.
We'd already done that.
That's right.
All right.
Mayor saw yours.
All right, we're still in session at this time, do I have a motion?
Chris is going to make.
Chris.
Counsel, I'd like to ask that you call for a public hearing for April seventh, for Project Pipe, for a, an incentive grant totaling roughly one point one million dollars.
And, and the second one?
And a second public hearing for Project Lone Star, for a ten-year incentive grant for roughly one million four hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
I make the motion, Mayor.
That's second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, any discussion, comments? Hear none, all in favor? Any opposed? Hear none, I will pass. Chris, thank you for your presentation.
Motion adjourned.
I have a motion and a second, adjourned, all in favor? We adjourn. The cocktail hour can start now, Mr.-